Good afternoon. Welcome to the regular meeting of December 14, 2021. A roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Ursula.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda, and I would like to recommend that we adopt the agenda with a modification to place item 18, Community Input on Non-Agendized Items, up when we start our earlier meeting.
Our later meeting?
I would consider moving 17 up also.
Okay. Sixteen and seventeen.
Okay.
Before our organizational meeting.
Got it.
So that would be after adoption of the minutes, which is item 10. So it would come after item 10. And that way, we have speakers.
They don't have to sit through.
They don't have to sit through a long process.
Yep. So moved as amended?
Second as amended.
Moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Community input on closed session items. I see no one here, so I think we can dismiss from reading. It is 3:02, and we will now recess into closed session, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to our regular meeting of our board. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 p.m., we will have opening ceremonies with a moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by trustee Anderson.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. Adoption of the minutes from 11:1621, 11:2921, and 12:0721. Roll call vote.
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wagen. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
My apologies. I need to amend that. I am so sorry. We, in, before our closed session meeting, we amended our agenda to put items 16, which are comments on non-agendized items, and 17, superintendent comments, after item 10, before our organizational meeting. We know we have speakers here tonight, and we wanted to give them the opportunity to speak and not have to sit for 45 minutes of what may seem boring to many people. So that was, should have been part of the agenda.
Well, that was part of the minutes.
They just approved the minutes. The agenda was done.
We're fine. So that's what we are doing. We are having public comments earlier than expected.
But we need the roll call vote.
So we're now, we did the roll call.
Oh, was?
Before the.
Yes.
So we're all ready.
We're all set.
Thank you. Okay. So item 16, Comments on Non-Agendized Items.
I shall read.
Yes.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda item topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during the superintendent's comments. And one other thing, our microphones are directional, so if you can make sure the pointy end of the microphone is just at your mouth, you can be higher or lower but facing your mouth, then we can all hear you more clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have 20 minutes for comments on mandates, and I have numerous comments, so I'm going to limit them to two minutes each, so we can get in as many as we can of you. I'm going to call three people at a time. So the first person come up, and then just know your second or third. Lisa Martinez, Amy Peters, and then Allison Guiman.
My godsons attend CDM, so this is very personal. I survived a severe case of COVID last December. I lost my mother to complications of COVID in January. I know what this virus can do. I also know what these gene therapy bioweapons are doing to young people around the world. A few headlines. A Baker County high school senior is hospitalized after collapsing on the tennis court. Breaking new details of the death of a high school soccer player. Finland Denmark soccer player starman Christian Ericsson collapses towards the end of the first half of the game. The Kennedy High community is mourning the death of one of their star football players who suddenly collapsed on the field. A South Carolina high school football player has died after collapsing at football practice. A West Catholic high school student has died after a football scrimmage. Mainstream media is lying to you. Example, Smithsonian magazine headline, "Climate Change May Cause An Increase In Heart Defects In Babies." And the American Heart Association says cannabis use disorder may be linked to growing number of heart attacks in younger adults. They're getting desperate, creating cognitive dissonance so people can explain away injury and death caused by this deadly gene therapy. So I say this to you and quote the words of our Lord Jesus Christ as written in Mark 9:42. But if anyone abuses one of these little ones who believe in me, it would be better for him to have a millstone tied around his neck and be thrown into the sea. Blood will be on your hands, so I beseech all of you, dig deep, listen to your conscience. Save the lives of our children. Do not mandate these shots. Do not force parents to pull their children out of school and ruin their lives. Give them a chance to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you guys can see we're going to keep coming until this issue is addressed because we in America are free, and our freedoms were given to us by the U.S. Constitution. The Tenth Amendment tells us that you can't impose anything on us. We have rights. We parents have rights. We just had a great football season at Newport Harbor. My son was on the team that won CIF. I am so grateful that our kids were able to play sports. What I'm concerned about is that we have a dictator, governor, who's going to try and take away everything from our kids for the next few months. Please stand up against him. A mandate is not a law. I don't know how many times we're going to have to come and tell you that, but a mandate is not a law. And you guys are going to be responsible for harms to our children, because I've talked to several of you. And when you are pushing the vaccine on our kids, I've had teachers tell my kids to get it. I've had, there's been vaccines on campus. You guys can't do that and not be responsible. It doesn't matter if a third party is doing it SOS. It doesn't matter. You guys are hosting it. You will be responsible. I'm trying to keep you guys from hurting our kids further. You have the power. Newsom doesn't have the power over us. Everything is local. It's really important that all of you start standing up for our kids, because when things go down and kids are hurt, we're going to be back here telling you, you're responsible.
And after Allison, thank you. After Allison, Laurel Gregory, Anthony Smith, and Claire J.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My husband and I live in Newport Beach, and our son is in first grade. We, along with scores of other parents, have valid concerns regarding the unlawful COVID-19 vaccine mandates Governor Newsom is trying to impose onto parents of healthy children in grades K through 12. I am here to advocate for informed parental consent between parents and pediatricians, and to make it clear, our family will not co-parent with the government. Just today, breaking news, LAUSD, California's largest school district and the second-largest school district in the nation, suspends enforcement of the vaccine mandate. In closing, in closing, to the best of my knowledge, the Newport Mesa Unified School District has not publicly voted to denounce the proposed vaccine mandate. It's disappointing that our school board members have not publicly gone on record to confirm your respective positions, and so we, the people, know where you stand. Included in this folder are 10 copies of a proposed resolution already drawn up for you to amend as you see fit. It is proposing noncompliance to a vaccine mandate. The goal is to get as many districts as possible to send these resolutions to the governor before the Senate and the Assembly, when they are back in session in January, in hopes that Newsom will rescind the proposed mandates. The Unity Project Online, who authored this document, has vowed to stand behind you and to help you in your legal defense should you agree to not comply. I challenge you to follow through with publicly voting to denounce a mandate and submit a like-kind resolution to Newsom. Thank you.
As I'm sure you can tell, the concerns we all have regarding the current and pending mandates are growing exponentially, as are our numbers. We are Democrats, Republicans, vaccinated, unvaccinated, parents, teachers, all united. We now have over 98 school boards refusing to comply in California. We are here to ask you to join forces with us and the brave people that are standing up for our children and paving the way for us. Last month, I addressed the board's double standard enforcing mask mandates on our children as you publicly exercised your freedom to go maskless. Obviously, children are not being masked for their safety, as you claimed. They're becoming bargaining chips for the $43 million NMUSD received in ESAR funds, and as a condition of accepting those funds, the district must enforce the mask mandate and others that follow. We invited you to stand up for the 19,000 children you represent and nullify the illegal mandates, not laws. Superintendent Smith and President Yelsey, you both replied in separate emails that you cannot defy mandates because the state would close schools and/or fine districts that did not enforce mandates. Tonight, we ask for transparency, to acknowledge that you need help fighting this madness, to acknowledge that you are unmasked because you know they're not effective, to acknowledge that you see that vaccines are not necessary for healthy children, who, according to the CDC, have a death rate of statistically 0%. To acknowledge that you are aware of the ever-mounting, horrifying stories of children and young adults being injured, maimed, and dying from vaccines, that you won't let this happen, that you would rather be fined and see closures than knowingly support a mandate that can ultimately injure, maim, or kill the children you were elected to watch over. And we invite you to work alongside us, to go to Sacramento, to flood Senator Pan's office, to reach out to our legislators. We can make this happen, and we are stronger together.
I'm Anthony Smith. I'm a parent. I'm a full-time single dad. That means I'm mommy and daddy. Got my hands full. I don't see MDs on those names, but you all seem like fair people, so I'm going to shoot it straight. Okay? We say pledge of allegiance, liberty. Give me liberty or give me death. Okay? And compulsion to disease is a violation of liberty. Now, there has been a study done. Children do have a 0% mortality rate to COVID. You know who did that study? Johns Hopkins University. You may know who they are. You may also know who Oxford is, and Stanford is, and Harvard is, and they did a great thing for this country, in this world. It's called the Great Barrington Declaration. We can all shoot statistics. We can all shoot personalities and profiles and beliefs, but let me just read it to you straight. Okay? Here we go. 15,000 of the greatest epidemiologists in the world, in the world, signed this. This is beyond any declaration of mankind. They signed this, and here it is, as immunity builds in the population, the risk of infection to all, including the vulnerable falls. We know that all populations will eventually reach herd immunity. An example, the point at which the rate of new infections is stable, and that this can be assisted by but is not dependent upon a vaccine. And we all know that it's not a vaccine. It's called a COVID shot, really, because a vaccine gives you immunity. With this COVID shot, you can still get the disease, and you can still get the disease. So let's just call it how it is. Our goal should therefore be to minimize mortality and social harm until we reach herd immunity. The most compassionate approach that balances the risk and benefits of reaching herd immunity is to allow those who are at minimal risk of death to live their lives normally. That means no masks, no social distancing, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection while better protecting those who are at higher risk. We call this focus protection. Now, I'm going to tell you what. I don't care what these people have to say, but if my son gets hurt or dies, you best believe I'm not coming back talking. Okay? You best believe that. And you can send your FBI all you want, because that's not a threat. You kill my son, guess what? Blood is on your hands. That's right.
Excuse me. Point of order, please. I would like us to maybe reread the Civil Code and Conduct for this meeting. I just saw this gentleman go like this to us. That's not okay. It's not okay. We want to listen to you, but please.
In the room, when you came in, we handed out these board protocols. I hope you read them. If you have not been to our meetings before.
We didn't do anything.
We talk about public comments time a lot, dialogue with trustees, disruptive behavior. We will stop our meeting. We do not want to be threatened by anyone, but we will stop our meeting. So please be respectful in this boardroom, and if you don't feel you can be or you are not being respectful, we can have you escorted out. Thank you. After Claire is Karen Bates, Amber Johnson, and Portia Fisher. Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I will go straight into it, starting with a few points from the Unity Project. As we all know, per the CDC, the fatality rate for children from COVID-19 nationwide is 0.0003%, or statistical 0% chance. Accordingly, children are not warranted to be vaccinated for COVID-19. Pursuant to the CDC, the CDC director and Dr. Fauci in his New York Times November 12 interview, "The COVID-19 vaccine will not prevent infection or transmission of the virus, nor will it prevent serious injury, hospitalization, or death any longer. Therefore, the vaccine is no longer the best tool for prevention of transmission. It is not a medical treatment at best, hence it cannot be mandated, as treatments are a personal medical choice pursuant to the state and federal constitutions." Again, pursuant to the FDA, "The vaccine manufacturers in multiple science across the nation and the world, these vaccines pose grave risks for severe myocarditis, blood clotting, and neurological damage," to name a few, predominantly prevalent adolescents. And we do not know the long-term effects. As such, "The risks of taking the vaccine strongly and significantly outweigh the benefits, especially as it pertains to the pediatric community." We understand that many districts, including this one, may have already accepted funding that requires the district to push certain COVID protocols, including masking and vaccine mandates, but we hope that you would never put money over what is best for our children. Let the parents make medical decisions for their own children. They're not profit centers for the school districts, the government, or for pharmaceutical companies. They're at zero risk of this virus, and even if they were at risk, these shots do not prevent them from getting it or spreading it. This is not about being pro or anti-vaccine. This is about choice. We ask that you pass a resolution to oppose Newsom's mandate. We ask that you take a stand, along with many other school districts in California. There is strength in numbers, and we need you to represent us, represent our voice, as we were elected to do. Thank you very much for your time and for doing what is best for our children, who are powerless and voiceless. Okay. First of all, I'm not going to thank you for your time, because you work for us and you are elected by us. My aunt died of the, quote, "vaccine." It is listed on her death certificate, so I feel very strongly and very passionately about this subject matter. My girlfriend Kate, her name is Unbreakable Kate on Instagram, if you'd like to look her up. She's paralyzed from the waist down, and she's relearning how to walk right now. She will never be a flight attendant again. She will never work again, and she is only 34 years old. She had the J&amp;J vaccine. There are so many stories just like this one. I've sent them to you, so I know you've seen them. The NMUSD has the power to enforce or not enforce these vaccine mandates. The Orange County Board of Education is against mandated vaccines, but our local school district board trustees make the ultimate decision for our children. Children have over 99.99% recovery rate from COVID. They are not at risk. They do not require a vaccine. And this COVID vaccine, as many have told you tonight and other nights, is not a traditional vaccine with the virus in it. It is mRNA technology. Pfizer is the only vaccine with the emergency youth authorization for kids 18 years and younger. We don't even have the option to give them the Johnson &amp; Johnson one, the one that paralyzed my girlfriend. Ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine have been proven to successfully prevent and treat COVID-19. Our government has denied the public access to these drugs. Do you not see what this is all about? It's not about a virus. You guys will all have blood on your hands if you force this vaccine on us and on our children, and do not take money in exchange for the health and safety of our kids. Their safety should come first.
Hi. Good evening. Like that? Yeah. This is my first time here, and I'm not too prepared, but I just, you know, this has been so terrible, everything that's been happening with our children and our students, and I wanted to come and see, you know, everybody that's making all this harm happen. And I mean, just the masks alone have been so damaging emotionally, and, you know, the children can't communicate anymore. They can't hear each other. They're coming home with headaches and not being able to, you know, do their studies. We won't be in the district once the shot is enforced, because, you know, we choose life. And there, you know, we have freedom. And, I mean, you know, our Creator gave us the choice. That's the one thing He gave us, is choice. And it seems like this whole nation is trying to take our choice from us. And, I mean, where did accountability go, too? It seems like when all this upset happened, and, you know, with all the humans, it's all goes back to the lack of accountability. And, you know, we are accountable for our children. You know, if my son were to do something harmful, I would pay the consequences for him. So therefore, I'm accountable for him on those levels. Why not am I accountable for him on his health? You know, if he's hospitalized, aren't I going to be paying for those bills? You know, I'm accountable for him in all the other areas, but not for whether or not he gets to live a healthy and functioning life in his body that he was given, instead of, you know, some poison being in there and running amok in his cells. The other thing I wanted to address is the whole religious thing going on in school right now, and how his teacher is pushing, you know, her religious beliefs on him. And I know that I need to address that with a principle, but I figured I'm here, and you guys seem to be, you know, maybe addressing those issues, too. But again, freedom of religion. You know, I don't like her pushing her values and her, you know, her stuff on him. Thank you.
Thank you.
When Abraham Lincoln so famously said that "we are a nation of the people, by the people, for the people," we need to all remember the truth of that matter. We don't live in a monarchy where the sovereign power is held by a king. We live in America. This was an extremely unique and beautiful experiment where the people were given the sovereign power. We have the sovereign power. We elect people to represent us. You serve us. You serve our children. And I wonder if you know how incredibly difficult it is for all of these moms and dads to stand up against the power that seems to think they get to make the decisions for our children. But ultimately, we get to make the decisions for our children. I'm just sad for those who won't know better than to take their children out of this district should you choose, to mandate something that has more risk of harming them than that which it's supposed to protect them. So if the manufacturers of this shot have zero liability, are you willing to take all liability? When children are accidentally vaccinated on campus, when a five-year-old dies from a heart attack, are you willing to do that? I hope you're not. I hope you're willing to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have three more people. I'm going to fit them in Danielle Mills, Leslie Boren, and Kim Sargent.
Hi. I have these little fact sheets. I don't know if you can pass those out for me. Just some COVID facts and the CDC and government websites, where they are all accessible. According to the CDC, the top one says the death rate for children under 19 years from COVID-19 is statistically zero. Statistically zero. They are wearing masks, blocking their air, not able to concentrate, not able to see their teachers speak. The young ones who are learning to sound out words and read and write, especially the young ones, can't see their teachers enunciate the words. There is a huge issue with kids' learning, and I don't know if anyone on this board has thought about how these things are going to affect these kids in the years to come. These are horrible circumstances, and our kids are suffering. While we're allowed to go free, mask-free till tomorrow, although I'm going mask-free even after tomorrow, our kids are being forced to wear masks only in the classroom. And for what purpose? It serves no purpose. It does not protect them. It does not protect the teachers. No one, they touch their masks, they pull them down, they're filthy, dirty, they're breathing in dirt and their own saliva. It's disgusting. And the fact that no one, you know, on any side of this board has stood up for the kids is outlandish to me. So please review these things, and we need to get rid of these masks. They have to go. They have to go.
Leslie Bonin?
I was not coming here this evening prepared to speak to all of you, but I watch all the families that come before me, and I think maybe I offer just a little bit of a unique perspective, because I taught in LA Unified for 12 years prior to having my own children. And I taught the little ones, which the mom right before me spoke to. And I have a 16-year-old son, who is a junior at Corona Delmar High School, and one that has recently graduated in the class of 2020 when the world shut down. I understood from the beginning why. Nobody knew. Everybody was afraid, and people were feeling more fearful than hopeful. Every single one of us in this room, watching on TV, all the ladies and gentlemen sitting in here, we know better. Why do we know better? Because we're two years in and thousands of people have spoken out for and against various mandates. You want the vaccine? You don't want the vaccine. You want to wear a mask? You don't have to wear a mask. But I genuinely do not believe that my 16-year-old son, who has already had COVID, I've already had COVID, our 104-year-old great-grandfather had COVID. And he sadly passed away from old age, not COVID. He recovered and he was fine. So I just want you to be reasonable in your thought process when it comes time to institute a mandate. I don't care what the verbiage is, I don't know about the definitions, everybody seems to twist things around, but I want you to genuinely understand what it would be like to sit in a classroom learning anatomy and physiology.
Leslie, I'm sorry, the buzzer is not working, but it's been two minutes, so.
Okay, well, I'll finish with this. Studying anatomy and physiology tells you about the systems of our bodies and how they work. And the number one system that keeps us alive every day is not just our heart, but our lungs. If our lungs are truly viable and strong with no disease, I can't imagine breathing in a poison all day long, every day is healthful to keeping our children healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Kim Sargent. Kim Sargent.
I'd just like to start off by saying that we here in Orange County are blessed. We have some of the smartest people around, most sophisticated, and I'll say privileged, and I mean that literally. We are privileged people here in Orange County. We're blessed. And we have a responsibility to be good, good stewards of what we've been given. And these parents all here are concerned, concerned citizens, they're concerned about the health of their children. What's more precious than our children? Nothing, all right? Every parent here would die for their child. And I'm thinking about the Nuremberg Code and how they warned, you know, one of the things that came out of that was that you can't experiment on people. And people can argue that this is not an experimental procedure, but the science does change. The science is not settled. That's the nature of science, is that it changes. I remember when they used to say global warming, global warming, and then it stopped warming, so they changed it to climate change. So they could have both bases covered, you know, both ways. Science changes and it won't be a surprise to me in the least if they find out that the science is going to change on this jab, this experimental jab. And the funny thing is, is our reality today was the conspiracy theory of a year ago. Like I'm looking at something where it talks about the Nuremberg Code and it mentions, you know, we're misleading, COVID vaccination isn't mandatory in the U.S. Well, guess where we are today? Trying to make it mandatory, right? Even though it's just citing that, that's why it's misleading to compare it to the Nuremberg Code of forced experimentation, right? They're going to learn things and the truth's going to come out and the Nuremberg Code has penalties for people that violate it. And the gentleman that was in here, he's a gentleman, he just is angry and he has a right to be. And I would like to see more men here. And you shouldn't be concerned about the men that are yelling, you should be concerned about the men that are quiet. All right?
Thank you very much. We will move on to item 17, Superintendent Comments.
Yeah, one of the parents mentioned the courage to come out and certainly it's cold out, it's a busy time of the year. The board recognizes that you are passionate about this and that you show up every board meeting, so that's true. And one of them said at the beginning too, that they'll keep coming back and I know that this board is interested in hearing what people have to say and by further evidence tonight, when you allowed them, because there were only a couple left, to finish their thoughts so they could be heard. So please, if you're compelled to show up, please do. I've seen in the eight weeks I've been here this board, listen, just a couple of clarifications. Los Angeles Unified and San Diego Unified mandated their own self-imposed vaccine mandate for students and they have extended that, but it's an extension of their own mandate. I share that because this board has mentioned recently that they're not now, nor do they intend to consider a district-sponsored vaccine mandate. So they won't be in the LAUSD position because that's not what they're discussing now or intend to discuss. I just wanted to make sure we were clear there. A couple of comments about ESER. Again, the federal funds aren't compelling us to follow the mask mandate, just for clarification purposes. It's the CDPH mandate and people are mentioning law or not law, it's a bit of a red herring argument, we're not saying it's a law. We've shared the notice with folks that have asked for it, that wanted to see that evidence that CDPH has mandated for districts and what would be the recourse. And then recently in San Diego, a judge affirmed that and said that districts absolutely are compelled to enforce the mask mandate. So even the courts have said, whether it's the law or not, that districts are compelled to follow it. And this board has said they are going to follow those state mandates and keep their classrooms open all day, every day, all year. That's what they've said for months and months. That's been their focus. I just wanted to clarify that mandate versus law and what's happened recently in the courts. The religion being taught in class, I would say, if you want to bring a note to one of my staff, we certainly want to follow up on things happening in the classroom, so please, I didn't catch your name because I didn't see the list, but at some point, please pass them a note. My staff over here to the right will work on that. As far as the requests for the board to agendize a topic, this is where, you know, folks get frustrated and I understand that. This board is not compelled to agendize prospective topics and they have decided not to agendize prospective mandates or prospective legislation. For those parents that are concerned, and many of you, I don't know that all of you in the audience, because I don't know why everyone's here, but many of you that spoke concerned about a forced mandate. I know some folks were encouraged when they heard on Good Morning America, the governor say that he proposes a more lenient approach than LAUSD or San Diego Unified, that the leniency in his proposal would be a religious exemption, I'm sorry, and a personal belief exemption, where parents could choose not to have their students vaccinated. So for those folks that don't want it to be their reality, that is encouraging for them. And so again, this board will continue to monitor what the state mandates and we will continue to answer that question each time you come back, that this board is not going to agendize prospective topics. So those are the updates I have on those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to item 11, which is our annual organizational meeting. And I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith. I know there are some people who want to leave, so why don't we wait for two minutes?
Can we also make sure the gentleman in the back sits down?
Pardon?
Eduardo asked him if he wants to sit down. The guy in the back needs to sit down.
Eduardo went and talked to him.
Right. And he said no. So we just sit down.
And for those people who are staying in the room, would you please take a seat? We don't have people standing in the back of the room. They would have to take a seat to be in the boardroom.
He can stand way down.
Okay, I'll now turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith.
So this is the portion of the school year where we reorganize the board and we'll have a variety of appointments, some required, some optional committee appointments. What I will do is introduce each item and then ask the board for nominations. If there are multiple nominations, we'll have discussion. We'll look for second to those nominations, discuss each, and then vote. We'll have a roll call vote for the required board seats and then we'll do yay or nay for the others and fill these positions. Thank you, the seven of you, for being so willing to serve on these myriad committees. There are many. One of the most exciting things we do each year, so get ready for this. 11A is approve election of the board president. Do I have a nomination for board president?
I nominate Michelle Bartow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first, we have a second. Let's make sure we record that. Yelsey, first, trustee Yelsey, and second, trustee Metoyer. Yeah. Any discussion? Call the question, roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursula?
Yes.
It's unanimous. All right.
Yay, congratulations.
One audience member may not be as happy.
He looks a little sugary.
Item 11B, approve election of the board vice president. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Char Metoyer.
Any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
No.
Trustee Ursula?
No.
By my count, five yeses, two nos. All right, moves forward. 11C, approve the election of the board clerk. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Carol Crane.
Do I have any other nominations?
I second it? Oh, there is.
There's this, I saw a hand up, second nomination. I don't think, maybe because I was talking, probably my fault, I'll be quiet and let you say what you're going to say, trustee Ursula.
Sure, I nominate trustee Anderson.
We have two nominations, trustee Crane, trustee Anderson. Open up for discussion.
Hi, I would like to nominate trustee Anderson as she was elected nearly four years ago and has not held any leadership position to this point. So that has left sort of a vacuum in leadership representing the West Side. No one has had a leadership position from the West Side since 2018. So from my vantage point, especially the fact that our president now will be three years with a president that is from Newport Beach, I am just woefully deeply concerned that the issues impacting our West Side of Costa Mesa are not being substantially represented. And this being trustee Anderson's final year on the dais, I really see no reason that one who has been serving would get skipped over. I don't, I feel like that might be unprecedented actually, to give zero leadership positions in the four-year period, except for, you know, extreme health issues or something where the person didn't want a leadership position. So I'm just not at all comfortable with the new person that came in when I came in getting a spot when we have someone who has been serving diligently, really respecting the West Side community and speaking up and advocating for them daily to go the four years with zero leadership. That just does not sit well with me, so that's why I nominated trustee Anderson. Thank you.
As the nominator, I would like to mention that the reason that I nominated Mrs. Crane is because her zone straddles both Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. She is planning hopefully a long career in our, on our board. She has served the district in other capacities and has demonstrated her leadership and I feel that she will be able to represent the entire school district with balance and caring for all of our kids. And that's why I nominated Mrs. Crane, trustee Crane.
One of the reasons I'm considering not running is because I have been told that I have no future having a leadership role up here. I'm not sure yet if I'm going to run or not, but that kind of information and that kind of perspective has been disappointing to say the least. And I'm going to be honest about it because it hasn't been okay. I was elected with 64% of the vote in my area. I have not been able to have the respect by some of the former board and some of that mindset has continued unfortunately with this current board. I serve 1,820 students. I advocate for them daily. When I apparently am asking for some of the most vulnerable students in the district over and over again for things that they need as basic pieces of education, like a bus ride to school, I am apparently told that I'm too demanding. I'm sorry, that's what this role is. This role is to advocate. If someone is not willing to do that, in my opinion, they don't deserve a seat at this table. One of the reasons we went to trustee zones rather than having at-large elections was so a minority-majority area would have representation and an equal chance at leadership roles. That is the area that I represent. I represent West Side, Costa Mesa. So again, that, despite the fact that the law was changed, I'm ostensibly being pushed out of that again. That to me is unacceptable. I have diligently done my homework every single day of being on this board. I think there's, there are possibly people who don't read the budget and have conversations with our finance person constantly, who do not go through the data of every single school and ask questions. I have done a very good job of being in this role representing the students in my area and I deserve a spot to read one paragraph on our agenda and sign the documents. That to me is fairness and that to me is equity. To continue to push out the minority-majority leadership person to me is completely unacceptable. Thank you.
I don't see lights on any further discussion. All right, we have two nominations. I mentioned I'm going to take the first nomination first. We had a first by trustee Metoyer for trustee Crane. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Wagen second, trustee Wagen second.
Trustee Wagen?
I second you.
Oh, she seconded me. I didn't.
But I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to be clear because Rosie's going to be mad at me if I don't get it right, okay? I have a first from trustee Metoyer, a second from trustee Wagen. Any discussion or further discussion on trustee Crane? Then I'll call for a roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Ursula?
No.
We have a vote of 5-2, so the motion passes. The next, all of the rest, we'll just ask for all in favor, all opposed, and we'll report that out. 11D is the appointment of the board secretary. That is the superintendent, one Dr. Smith. Do I have a motion?
I've heard of him. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Yelsey?
Sure.
With the first. Bartow with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, I get to be the secretary. Approve the recommendation, or I'm sorry, approve the appointment of assistant secretary and those folks are listed on your agenda, they are all of the assistant superintendents. Do I have a motion that they get to be assistant secretaries?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Crane? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. You've all got gigs too now. 11F, approve recommendation for chief negotiator, which is Leona Olson. Do I have a recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Yelsey, Metoyer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. 11G, approve designation of management personnel as presented. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Anderson with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Or I'm sorry, any opposed, rather? Any abstentions? All right. 11H, approve the election of representatives to the Office of College and Career Education, CTE Advisory Council. Again, we can take in this up to three trustees. Do I have a nomination? Trustee Metoyer.
I nominate trustee Anderson, trustee Wigan, and trustee Yelsey. Is that okay to do it in a big lump?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Do I have any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, passes unanimously. Approve the election, 11I, CROP Representative 2022. This is trustee Bartow's second year of a two-year term, and we can have up to two alternates. Do I have a motion?
I move to elect trustee Bartow as the member and alternates trustee Crane and Wigan. Can I self-nominate? Okay.
Second.
But first, any other nominations? Okay, do I have a second? It looked like trustee.
Bartow beat me up.
All right. Trustee Bartow.
That's okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is unanimous. 11J, election of District English Learners Advisory Committee, D-LAC, for one-year term, 2022. We can have up to three. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, I would like to nominate myself and trustee Ursulou.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
I would like to nominate trustee Bartow.
Only?
Well, the other two have already been nominated. Oh, you want me, I would like to nominate.
One of my considerations, though, is attendance at meetings. So if you will come to the meetings, then I think that's okay.
Again, we have, we have one, just Robert's rule of order. We have one nomination for two people. We're looking at, if there are other nominations.
I got it. I picked up on it, I just didn't get a chance. I would like to nominate trustee Anderson, trustee Bartow, and trustee Ursulou.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I don't see any lights, but go ahead.
We have to bear.
Yeah.
One of the things that we had discussed in previous years was attendance at meetings. In my recollection, in the last year, trustee Bartow did not attend any of the D-LAC meetings. So I think if someone is going to be a part of the committee, they need to attend at least 50% of the time. I understand that schedules conflict, but there needs to be regular attendance, in my opinion.
Trustee Crane, please.
Yes, my comment was that I am glad that we're having a representative from the Newport area to be part of the contingent.
Yeah, that's what it should be.
And I'd like to add that I have attended meetings in the past year, but I haven't been keeping track of others' attendance. But I know I have attended at least 50% of the meetings.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, I have two nominations. I take the first nomination first. The first nomination is for trustees Anderson and Ursulou. I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, wait. This is, because there's two motions, right?
There are two motions, let's get it. I have two motions. The first motion is for trustees Anderson and/or Soilu.
Got it.
I have a nomination. I'm looking for a second. Seeing none, that motion fails. I have a second nomination for trustees Anderson, Bartow, and/or Soilu. Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, moves forward. 11K, approve the election of liaison with Special Education Community Advisory Committee, CAC. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Crane and trustee Metoyer.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it is unanimous. 11L, approve election of representative to nominee committee on county school district organization. Do I have a nomination?
Nominate trustee Metoyer.
I'll second.
Before we second, do we have any other nominations? All right, we have a second with trustee Bartow. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. 11M, approve election of student board member liaison for 2022. Per the board bylaw, it is the board VP, which would now be trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
I move that we nominate trustee Metoyer for the position of student board member liaison.
I second.
Do I have any other nominations? It's board bylaw, so it's hard to vote against. I have to just declare, give me a chance.
I wanted to see if we wanted to have an alternate on there as well, or if we just wanted to do the one. It's a board, we'd have to change the bylaw, but I don't know if anyone's interested in that either.
We could consider bringing it back.
I'd like to.
I know that trustee Anderson and I had talked, and she would like to join in, and I have no problem. We can either elect an alternate or add to it. If we add to it, I don't think we have to, if you just come, I don't think we have to change the bylaws, but if.
Okay. So I have a nomination, one nomination on the floor for trustee Metoyer, and it sounds like there might be a second nomination for trustee Metoyer, if I'm hearing you correctly, with an alternate.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Correct. Oh, I like that one.
Any discussion?
I appreciate that. I had wanted to be vice president, so I appreciate, because I really wanted to work with the students.
And I will second my nomination after the discussion.
So is that, you have two or one?
I've got, I've got two.
For the second one.
I've got two. Yep, I've got two. The first one is only trustee Metoyer.
Got it. We'll get this.
Do I have a second? Seeing none, that motion fails. The second one is trustee Metoyer with trustee Anderson. Do I have a second?
I will second. I will, oh, you did second it.
He beat you to it.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is unanimous. Trustee Ursulou, just so you know, I do look up to my left to see if your hand is raised, so I am not ignoring you, just know that, okay? 11N, approve the election of superintendent student advisory committee, the SSAC.
We all wanna do that.
I hear this is a popular one every year. I'll remind you, we can have no more than three. Do I have a nomination?
I would like to make a motion to have a rotation. So there are two that are assigned per month, and we know who's gonna show up at each meeting.
Two that show up, and how is the rotation defined?
Two, so we would decide at a later date who's gonna show, like, which two are going to go to each meeting.
All right, so.
Or three, I mean, we have three options.
Because we have five.
Well, we have, but we're allowed to have three at the meeting.
Yes.
So perhaps a rotation of three.
I have discussion. I have discussion on that.
Okay, I have one nomination. Do I have a second nomination?
Can you clarify the nomination?
Yeah, the nomination is to have it rotate, to have three people attend in a rotation, so everyone gets to serve.
I will, go ahead.
Do we need to open it up for an additional motion first, or do we need a second first?
If we don't have a second nomination, then we get a second and then discuss it, and we can have the discussion.
So is there a second nomination?
So if I think, if I have, if I want a discussion about that, I should make another nomination?
You don't, go ahead. Go with your discussion. We're, we're gonna lengthen this with the Brown Act. We get where you're going with this. Go ahead and share, because if we had two, you could talk about it.
I'll be quiet.
That's right. No, you're, no, no, no.
She's looking forward to moving down the road.
My only concern with that, because I've been a member and I really, this is a passionate board for me, is that sometimes we have topics that are continued to the next meeting, and so there's a little bit of a disconnect if you're there once and not there as a follower.
I actually think that could be a benefit, so then people will hear that discussion and hear it firsthand. But I hear what you're saying.
And, and I, that's why I liked your idea of maybe two permanent members with the third spot rotating, so that we all get a chance.
That wasn't my, my idea was that we would, we would have it assigned, so there would be three. So say in January, we would have a discussion, January would be like me and Crane.
So the whole thing rotates.
And then February, yeah, so then it would, every meeting would have three potentially, but it would rotate.
I would like to at least have one stable board member on that committee, because I almost wanna look at students and say, it's nice to have at least one person you know is gonna be there all the time and that carries the message all the way through. And then the other two spots rotating, I think that would, that would be fun, and we could try it. If it's a dismal failure, we won't do it again, but.
The superintendent would be that continuity, because that's a superintendent, so I would hope that we would get reports back about every meeting, so then we would all be updated.
Okay, then I'll, I mean, if need be, I can remove my name and say.
I'll take my name out if we have to be, to do this. It's fine.
Right now, all I have.
So I would like to make a second motion.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Anderson, Metoyer, and Yelsey for the superintendent student advisory committee.
Okay.
All right, second.
Hold on. Any further discussion now that we have the new motion? All right, do we have a second?
Yes. You have a second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. All right.
I have a shooting section. Thank you.
Okay. Onto the optional appointments. 11O, approve election of liaison with Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce Education Committee. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Anderson and trustee Metoyer to the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce Education Committee.
Do I have any other nominations?
I have one. And trustee Ursulou, I need you to look up right now, because I'm gonna, yeah. I would like to nominate trustee Anderson and trustee Metoyer with trustee Ursulou as an alternate. Would you be willing to accept that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have, I need water. I have a first with trustees Anderson and Metoyer. I have another first with trustees Anderson, Metoyer, with trustee Ursulou as an alternate.
I second Ursulou as, Ursulou as an alternative.
Well, let me see, because we go with the first one first. Do I have, yeah, do I have a second on the first motion to only two people? Seeing none, the motion dies. Do I have a second to the second motion?
Second.
And that was trustee Anderson. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. 11P, approve Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council Board Liaison. Do I have nominations?
I nominate trustee Wigan and trustee Yelsey.
Where? What is this?
No.
Youth Sports Council? Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped two ahead.
Do that one.
I nominate trustee Ursulou, trustee Metoyer, trustee Wigan. Oh, can we have three?
Yes.
Do I have any other nominations, or will we second the first?
I would love to be an alternate. It's very early in the morning, but.
Yes, it is.
You know, if there's someone that can't be there, I would like to attend as an alternate.
So is that a second nomination?
Yes.
So I have a second nomination with the three, with the addition of trustee Anderson as an alternate. Okay, do I have a second for the first nomination of the three, Ursulou, Metoyer, Wigan? Seeing none, that motion fails. Do I have a second for Ursulou, Metoyer, trustee Wigan, and trustee Anderson as an alternate?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. 11Q, approve election of legislative representative. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Bartow.
Do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, let me back up. I didn't see it.
You're on mute, trustee.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I just had a question about this one, because I see in the previous years, there's always an alternate listed. Do we, should we must have an alternate, or is that okay?
Want to be the alternate? Do you like to be the alternate?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't mean it for that reason, but if no one wanted to do it, and by law, we're supposed to have an alternate, I will do it. But I, that wasn't the intent.
That I have in my lengthy time in the district is that they don't require alternates for these, but some people have wanted to be included so that they could participate if someone can't, so that we're well represented. So I think the short answer is it's permissible, it's not necessary.
We can, if we can read, if we can read the body language, I think she said she's fine then.
We're going off of body language.
It sounded like you said you're okay with the first motion.
No, I was, I was saying that if it's customary to have someone as a backup, I wouldn't mind doing it if you need someone as a backup.
I appreciate that. That's nice.
Okay, so.
A second nomination.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to nominate trustee Bartow as the legislative rep with trustee Ursulou as the alternate.
Great. Any further discussion?
I would just love if we can have the monthly update, like, in our meeting, because there's so much legislation happening, and I feel like at times we don't get those updates in our board meeting, and so I would love to have those at every board meeting. Thank you.
There's a plan in place, too, irrespective of this vote, to have more comprehensive updates for you in this regard.
Thank you.
So thank you for mentioning that. All right, I have two nominations. The first is for trustee Bartow alone. Do I have a second? Seeing none, that motion fails. The second nomination, trustee Bartow with trustee Ursulou as an alternate. Do I have a second? Trustee Anderson, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is unanimous. 11R, approve election of representative to City of Newport Beach Youth Council. Do I have a nomination?
This is in an active committee at this point. So Rosie, did they tell you? Because I've asked, and I have not heard back.
They did. Per the notes, it says the council may reactivate in spring for the 2022-23 school year.
So in the spring of this year, or?
In the spring of this year to be prepared for the 22.
So we're talking a year and a half from now?
No. 2022, spring of 20, which is next year, which is.
Since 2022, 2023.
It's 2022, 2023. To prepare for.
They're, they're going to prepare for the next year. So they're going to have the meetings in the spring this year to prepare for the next school year.
So then our input would be...
Okay.
Yeah.
So in that case, I would like to nominate trustee Wigan and trustee Yelsey for this committee at the moment of its reactivation.
Very elegant.
Second.
Wait, do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a second? There we go, trustee Crane. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. 11S, approve election of liaison with Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Anderson and trustee Crane.
For 11S, the election of the liaison of Newport Mesa Schools Foundation? And that was again?
Anderson and Crane.
Thank you. Do I have another nomination? Seeing none, any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. 11T, approve election of NMUSD Visual and Performing Arts Committee Representative. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Crane and trustee Metoyer for the Arts Commission.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. 11U, approve election of Wellness Advisory Committee Representative.
I would like to make a motion to possibly change the name of this committee to the Nutrition Advisory. I think some of us have joined it in the past, anticipating that we would be talking about student wellness, mental, anything related to wellness. And it's basically a nutritional advisory group for the federal grants that we are participating in. So is there, could we possibly change the name of the committee?
I don't see why not.
I, I would know that answer right now. What I'd say is, staff can work on that. I think for this, for this item, let's figure out who's doing it. And then if we can do that, absolutely.
It's an optional.
And I, I would agree with that comment, because I've served on it for many years. And it is nutrition. It's great, but it's nutrition.
We'll, we'll look into that if we can, certainly.
Trustee Ersoilu had her hand up.
So, so do I have a nomination?
Trustee Ersoilu had her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, can I make a comment about that committee? I was on it as a parent. And it's not just nutrition, it's nutrition and physical activity. A lot of the regulation of the 20 minutes per day, five times a week, the, the monitoring and implementation of the, you know, overall state wellness guidelines of physical activity and nutrition. So I would not want to lose the physical activity. I understand wellness is too vague, but it really truly was physical activity and nutrition.
Okay. We'll, we'll absolutely take that into consideration.
Would you like to be the alternate? I feel like so much should be the alternate.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Can't even smile, because you get pickled.
I'd like to make a motion to, for trustee Crane and as an alternate, trustee Ersoilu for the Wellness, maybe called Nutrition Advisory Committee, NPE.
The committee to be named later. Any other nominations?
Do you want to, are you saying as a...
I would, yes.
As an alternate or both of them on the committee?
As an alternate.
As an alternate, trustee Ersoilu, as an alternate.
Okay. Any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. 11V, approve election of Policy Edit Team. Do I have a nomination?
I would also like to potentially change the name of this one. I think one of the main jobs and part of our governance is policy review. And we review policy at the state level, we review other local districts. It's not just editing policies that we get. So I would like to possibly, I see it is both, and the review is stricken out. So I would like if we could change it back to policy review. I think, was it at some point, policy review?
No. It was always policy edit, and I don't know when review got stuck in. The reason being, if you don't mind in the discussion time, the reason the committee was originally formed back in the day was there were two or three, and there still are, two or three people on the board that really edited things. They went through and saw spelling mistakes or easy of language and how it came across to the public. And we took up about a half an hour every time a policy revision was brought to the board on the nitpicking part of it. So the edit committee team was formed so that we people who love editing could get through it and have at least a wonderfully worded document that came to the board, and then the discussion happened. And so that's why the committee was formed.
Yes. I, I understand that. And while I love and enjoy editing, I also love the reviewing part. And so I just think that could clarify. And really, one of the things we've been talking about is having our board really step more into our governance team. And part of policy review is, is that it's a component of that, in my opinion.
Other discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Crane.
Oh, was also Leah?
Okay. Trustee Crane, then trustee Ersoilu.
So I was under the impression that any kind of policy is usually a study session, which is part of our review process. So the, the designation of this committee then gets muddled, what is exactly its, its role, right? Because it says, Existing District Committee to Review Policy Revisions. So review policy revisions, not, not review policy.
Correct.
Yeah, not, not to speak for people that have been here a lot longer than me, but the, the study sessions are for specific items where there is something of particular note to the board that they want to pull out from this process, which is ongoing. There are so many board policies, quite honestly, they need our attention. And so this group reviews them, edits them, makes recommendations, most importantly, that's the key, to the body of the board to then take action. That being said, sometimes a board will say, there's an item we need to study related to a board policy, and they do a study session on that. Is that...
Yes.
Additionally, to clarify, and maybe I'm incorrect, but with, for example, the CSBA and other civility policies that were not previously in our, or in a lot of boards' policies, would that be something that is part of this as well, or would that be a study session? Okay, so that would be a study session. Thank you.
Well, I think that's, that's part of the conversation around it, because there are a lot of, Rosie graciously printed out the whole board policy, like, three booklets for me, three big binders. And there are a majority of policies that haven't been updated for over a decade. So one of the things for me, and part of our role, is not just to wait for the state or CSBA or someone to tell us, hey, this one point on this one thing needs to be reviewed. It's for us, as part of our governing responsibility, to go through and see if there's some of those, like the one that we're reviewing for the upcoming board meeting, that there are a lot of language changes, and there's a lot of pieces to that that should have been reviewed in the past. And we bring them to the board to decide. So previously, I mean, a real-time example is the last thing that we edited and reviewed was about the, the comments and being able at the beginning of the meeting. So we had a discussion about it and then brought you a finalized thing to decide on, which I think that went very well. So those, that's why, to me, it's more of the review, and part of the job of that is editing.
Yeah. Trustee Ersoilu's been waiting so patiently.
Thank you. And I just want to sort of second what trustee Anderson mentioned and what trustee Bartow mentioned. I think there just is a simple difference of opinion on the functionality of the committee, and I'm more of the school of thought that it really truly is review and edit, not just editing. I'm not an editor, my PhD is in public policy. So I really feel that this committee is the place where, if there are new best practices, as trustee Bartow mentioned, that are coming out of CSBA, that we need to be attuned to, if there are policies that haven't been updated in a decade that need a pair of eyes, a sets of eyes on them, that this is a committee that takes in that so that we all don't have to sit through it. And then we only just take drafts of recommendations back to the full body. That's how I've seen most governance bodies with policy subcommittees function. Their job is to bring forth policy ideas that are either emerging in other places or need to be updated, and bring them to the full voting body, which is all of us. So they're not just out there, you know, in the Wild West making up policies, but they're really just looking for places that need updating, best practices that emerge, and bringing that to the forefront for everybody together to vote on, but so that all seven of us don't have to sit in Smith and, and decide those things. So beyond just typewriting, editing, really some thought behind it as well.
If, if the board is fine with expanding the original definition to that, I'm not, I'm not going to argue it. I just, I mean, it's not going to be a fight, but I just want to make sure everybody knows. And this first year of doing that will be a learning year for us.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I would just clarify one, one point. I think, and this really was in alignment with what trustee Ersoilu was saying, that really this group takes a first blush at reviewing, editing, or the first read for a new policy. And then they bring it to the board, and the board said, ah, we need some more time on that one. Then you would pull that for a study session. So really, the, the new and the revisions go through this group technically, and then they could be pulled by the board, anyway.
I'd like to call for the motion.
I, I heard a lot of discussion about the name and the purpose. I didn't hear a nomination for...
Here's my nominee.
Okay, all right.
My nomination is for the Policy Review and Edit Team. And my nomination is for trustee Anderson, trustee Ersoilu, and trustee Metoyer.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. 11W, approve election of representative for Orange County School Boards Association's Educational Topics Central or ETC. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Bartow, alternate trustee Anderson and Metoyer.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 11X, approve election of representatives to NMUSD City of Costa Mesa District's Liaison Meeting. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustees Anderson, Ersoilu, Metoyer, and Wigan.
Could only do three, because we can't have a quorum of the board at a meeting.
So then what...
You can nominate up to three.
I see. Costa Mesa.
I make, I'll...
I, I think, are you making a nomination?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that I record.
I'm making a nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Crane. It was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you still?
You're breathing. I want to look at some other things. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so I don't have a nomination for trustee Crane, trustee Metoyer.
I would like to nominate trustee Anderson, trustee Ersoilu, and trustee Metoyer, with trustee Wigan being an alternate.
Do I have a, do I have any other nominations? All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. 11Y, approve election of representatives to NMUSD City of Newport Beach Liaison Meetings. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate trustee Crane, trustee Wigan, and trustee Yelsey. Trustee Bartow, would you like to be an alternate?
Sure.
And trustee Bartow as an alternate.
Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a second to the first nomination?
Second.
First and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is unanimous, and...
It's the end of the list.
That completes my role as acting board president. And I gratefully pass the gavel to our new board president, trustee Bartow.
Well, I'm so pleased to have my first job being honoring trustee Yelsey for her service. Thank you very much for that, your leadership during a really rough year. We appreciate you. So we have little, a couple little things. For your wallet home, we can move your grandkids' pictures out of the way and put that there.
Thank you all. It's, it's been a pleasure, it's been a year. But I've had a lot of support from the entire board and staff and everyone else who has been so helpful, so supportive of everything for the year. So that part has not been difficult. That part has not been. But I think, you know, I am really proud of everything we've accomplished in terms of what we've done to get the kids back, to have the kids in school. And sometimes there are misconceptions about what we can do and what we can't do, and that's unfortunate. But I think we have done a really good job of keeping our eye on what's really important, and that's the kids in the district. And so thank you to all of you and to the staff.
I asked, I asked our PIO officer, Annette Franco, to come up and just take a picture of you with the plaque.
Sure. With all of us?
No, you can just have you with the plaque. We get us all the time. We can have all of us if you want, but... Okay.
Do you want us to stand?
Oh, don't make me stand.
You look spirited for a city.
You want me standing? Oh, actually, these two are great. President and past president, better, better picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Then president Bartow, you can adjourn the organizational meeting and tell us when we will reconvene.
Friday? No, no.
Friday 5.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn the annual organizational meeting. We'll reconvene after a brief recess at 7:30. All right, I'd like to call the student board members for their reports. Looking forward to that. So we'll start with Sophia from Costa Mesa High School.
Good evening, president Yelsey, members of the board and superintendent. I am here tonight to report on my experience at the annual education conference. I really enjoyed my time at the virtual conference and to have the chance to talk to and meet other board members throughout California and share experiences in our positions. Every school district was different in their problems and in ways of thinking of solutions based on different school cultures and demographics. It was interesting to hear the perspectives of different students and the changes they have made in their district through, through their leadership role. We did activities to gain insight into ourselves as leaders and action takers. We ran through a project near the end of the day where each group of four students had to decide on a problem to fix in their school district. Our group had chosen more diverse student involvement in district issues and topics. We discussed that more than often, and it's parents voicing their opinions for their children on several topics in which the majority of the children do not agree with. Our school district staff and teachers are ultimately working towards creating healthy, safe, and enriching environments for students, so more students should be welcomed and encouraged to voice their opinion on the topics being discussed at school-wide and district-wide meetings. It is something I feel passionate about, and I hope to work, work on through the duration of my position as a student member, along with my fellow members. Hearing the experience of others, I am so grateful to our school district and feel so honored to be able to represent our student body at these meetings. I hope to apply everything I learned from this conference and be able to contribute to improve our district community. Thank you.
Thank you. From Back Bay High School, we have Moss Elliott and Marcy Cope.
Good evening, superintendent Smith, president Yelsey, kind of, I don't know. Good evening, superintendent Smith, president Yelsey, kind of, I don't know. Board members, cabinet, and community. About a week and a half ago, a fellow board member and myself attended the California School Board Association's Annual Education Conference. This year's conference was both our first time attending, and we both enjoyed it immensely. Not only did it provide us with valuable tools ourselves, but connected us to students and school board members throughout the state. We learned team building skills, discussed the rights of student board members, and met and spoke to various businesses at the trade show. The most valuable experience from the conference, I believe, was the insight I got into the minds of the students across California. As a student in California, I obviously already had some insight. However, I had the realization that even though there are so many different experiences happening right now, we all have one thing in common. We need help. Our mental health collectively has taken a sharp decline in the last few years with the COVID-19 virus. And now trying to get ourselves back into some form of normalcy, it's impossible to have perfect mental health during a normal time. So now, it is the main issue we are facing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And student board member Kate Cherry from Newport Harbor High School.
You can just present. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that. Good evening, superintendent Dr. Smith, president Bartow now, and members of the board. I was unable to attend the conference due to a previous scheduling conflict, but tonight instead I was asked to present poll results as to whether students were aware of and/or have used paper or other school-provided tutoring services. Of the total number of students polled, 67.3% said they had heard of paper, the school-provided online tutoring service. When asked whether they had used paper or the school-provided tutoring services, 63.5% said no, and only 36.5% responded yes. Thank you.
All right, Harbor Council PTA report Lisa Bowler.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Smith, past president Yelsey, current new president Bartow, trustees, cabinet, and guests. I'm going to take this opportunity to thank everyone involved with our children. All of you in this, on the school board, and all of you in the audience. I want to thank our wonderful teachers and our classified staff of aides, secretaries, bus drivers, community facilitators, custodians, and also all those behind the scenes in the offices and out on our campuses. And everybody that I didn't mention, I'm really thankful to all of you also. All of you have gone above and beyond to help keep our schools safe and open through this trying time. And it's really important that our kids were able to have in-person learning. And then we had the cloud campus for those who chose to go that route. I want to thank all of our fabulous PTA presidents and their PTA staffs for their fabulous programs and events that they had managed to keep going through all of this also. And lastly, a huge thanks to my Harbor Council board. We make a great team and are doing all that we can to help our PTAs all thrive. I want to thank again everybody for all they do for our kids, and I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday season. And I'll see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have comments from CSEA president Pam Saunders.
Good evening, president Bartow, board superintendent, Dr. West Smith, cabinet, and guests. I can't see anything. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. CSEA wants to ensure that classified members' needs and concerns will continue to be addressed amid ever-changing guidelines and following all the rules from all agencies. CSEA is looking forward to ample notification and collaboration regarding any workplace changes. Our members are doing a great job and continue to support students and district needs no matter the circumstances. We would like to give our warmest thanks to all our classified employees for all their commitment and dedication. As everyone celebrates the many holidays this month, classified staff are thankful. We encourage everyone to follow all safe practices during the weeks ahead and look forward to students and staff in the classrooms in January. Please stay safe and continue to follow COVID protocols. We would like to wish everyone a happy holiday. Thank you from CSH up for 18.
Thank you. And now NMFT president Sarah Awatner.
You said my name right. She's been, she's been practicing.
All right, so people can't get my name right either.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much. Can you guys hear me? Yes. Good evening, president Bartow, board members, superintendent Smith of unimpeachable tone, and cabinet members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. On behalf of NMFT, I want to start by wishing everyone here a happy, safe, and joyful holiday with their families. Thank you, members of the cabinet, board, and administration for all the hard work you've put in this year. Next, I would like to recognize all of our members for the incredible work they've done the last several months as we close out 2021. What I hear from most folks is that the classroom is, this year is even more challenging than last all throughout the state when I talk to other locals. That people are being affected sooner in the school year in what seems to be the wide-reaching outcomes of pandemic fatigue. So thank you, teachers, nurses, secondary and elementary counselors, TOSSAs, librarians, psychologists, social workers, speech and language pathologists, and program specialists. Have a wonderful and well-deserved holiday recess. On a, on a very happy note, I'd like to mention how much we appreciated the district pushing out a donation for frontline workers in the form of a block of Chargers tickets. We randomly drew people to take themselves and a plus-one to enjoy a great game. I want to express appreciation to John Drake and his team for being responsive to our concerns about the scope and pacing of the elementary math training and for adjusting the plan to meet the needs of teachers this school year. The adjustment is being noticed and welcomed, and the feedback we're receiving. Also, Carrie Torres and the Ed Division for understanding the continued need for flexibility and clarity regarding grading timelines on the Schoology platform. It's great to have outcomes like this, and we, particularly with the math training, and we, as the other issue is quite, is, you know, ongoing. But we really look forward to resolving items that come up, other things that come up in this, in this collaborative manner when things come down the pike. Unrelated, the joint benefits team meets this Thursday. We're looking forward to another productive meeting with the district's team and our counterparts at CSEA as we move forward and towards negotiations this February. So thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to number 18, community input on agendized items. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Hold on.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on a discussion-action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board if the speaker prefers.
I'd like to call Wendy Leece.
Congratulations, president Bartow, members of the school board and superintendent Smith. My name is Wendy Leece. Hi, Leah, wherever you are. I'm sorry I was late to not be able to speak at the beginning, but I work at College Hospital, and I had two patients that I needed to call in CPS reports on. And, and so I did the right thing. I knew I might miss time to comment, but I had to do what my duty is. I am a mandated reporter, and I, I know I did the right thing, even though I was late. By the way, I, I also emailed all of you a resolution that close to 80 other school districts have passed to, to stand up for protecting our kids and to oppose the governor's mandate on the vaccines. Also, I'm very disappointed that the West Side has been marginalized again by not having Ms. Anderson be a officer. I was marginalized for eight years. I know what it feels like, and it's wrong, because the West Side does not get represented. I want to speak on item 20C. Gender-neutral restrooms at Newport Harbor High School in Newport, Mesa? Are you kidding me? Is that what we're going to do in this school district with tax dollars? Is even do some kind of a design and a budget to pay for? I know that Long Beach is, is designing a new pool for one of their schools, and it came up that somebody got into the architectural drawings and realized that they were designing general neutral shower, gender-neutral showers. Excuse me. If they want to do that in Long Beach, then those parents can speak up. But I do not think we need to have our tax dollars going for gender-neutral restrooms at any of our schools. We are not there. Boys and girls, no matter what gender they identify as, need to use the restroom of what's on their birth certificate to protect kids. Do you remember that case back east where a young man raped a girl twice in Virginia? Because this is what happens. We cannot go down this road. Please, use your common sense.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, we're going to move on to consent calendar. Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Weigand. Roll call vote.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Ursolu?
Okay, discussion-action calendar. We have 20A, approve the 2021 first-period interim report of district's financial status.
Well, good evening. It's a, really, it's a thrill to be with you tonight. And let's go ahead and, and talk about first interim here. So first of all, what is it? It's, you know, we are required to certify our financial condition twice a year. And with that, we're going to do some wonderful things, because at the end of this 12 month, 12 minutes of this presentation, you're going to be able to do some wonderful, amazing things, including, one, you'll know our proposed changes in the budget from the time that you adopted in June to October 31st. You'll know the multi-year impacts to our budget. You'll also have some ideas that you could help the state with to deal with their surplus. And you'll be able to hold your, your friends, your family, your constituents spellbound as you discuss the relationship between ending fund balance and cash flow. But wait, there's more. You will delight them with a positive certification. So let's talk about where we're at in the reporting cycle. The, the state, of course, does their budget in July. We came to you with our unaudited actuels in September. Here we find ourselves in December with the first interim. And then the rest of the year, we're looking, looking at January where the, the governor releases his January budget. And then March, we will come to you with second interim. And May, the governor releases, may revise, and then we will adopt our budget in June. And so let's buckle up and talk about the proposed changes to the budget. So first of all, revenue is increasing. And, and there's been a lot of talk about federal revenue and state revenue associated with COVID. But I have to tell you, the real, the real issue here, when we look at this, is we've got some, some property tax, favorable property tax impacts that are happening. The, the property values have been remarkably resilient. And, and that's wonderful news for us. But on, on this here, we're looking at a large recognition of federal and state money associated with COVID. So ESAR, GEAR funding, those kinds of things. So revenue is, is increasing substantially, and you're finding ways to use that. And let's talk about that. So expenditures also are increasing. And when we look, here we are at June adoption, and then we go to first interim. And in first interim, we're going to add about $7.1 million on the expenditure side. And most of that has gone to staffing and services. And so, and again, that's a lot on the restricted side. So it's a, it's a, the spending is somewhat contained on the restricted side, and it's one-time money. So let's take a look here at what we have with other financing uses and sources, and they're all uses. And here we are at June, and then we come to our first interim, and we make just a slight increase on the uses, and that's to fund new bus fleet. Unfortunately, those things tend to, to have a life of about 30 years, and then they have to be replaced. So a little bit of bus fleet. Now let's talk about our ending fund balance. And here we are at June adoption with an ending fund balance of just over 60 million. And at first interim, we're going to, that's going to increase substantially. And that's increasing by about 10.2 million. And the reason for that is all that restricted money. So it's all coming in at one time, but it's going to be spent over a number of years. So you're going to see the ending fund balance go up substantially here, but it's going to come down. And the other reason it's going up is for cash flow purposes. So we have to keep a certain, how do you say, balance, just like you do at home, to, to keep the cash flow. Because when cash, when you have no cash, it's, it's a real problem. And we don't want that problem. So let's take a look at the multi-year outlook. And so when you look at the multi-year outlook for revenue, the real leader here is property values. And so when you see that orange line there, that's carrying the day. That is substantial. We love that line. It's up and to the right, and so it's a wonderful story. And then, of course, here we have our federal money, and you see there a bump in the 21, 2021 year, and that's carrying through to 2122. And then we have state revenue, and then some local. And, and then, this is a great story, too. Sometimes it's really hard to align revenue with expense. I don't know, maybe you don't have that problem, but I'll tell you, I, I work on that every day here. And it's hard, it is a hard thing to do. But when you look at this, here's our revenue line. And again, that's a wonderful line. It's up and to the right. And then when you bring in expense, we are remarkably aligned, which is a wonderful testament to your prudence and ability to keep things on, on track. And, but you'll notice out to the right hand, the lines start to diverge again a little bit. And that's because all of this one-time money is going to come to an end in '24, '25. And, and Las Vegas rules do not apply to COVID money. Because what happens in the COVID time doesn't stay in the COVID time. It keeps going. And so some of these expenditures are going to continue afterwards. And so as you, as you tour, you know, sites and you see projects of unspeakable value, just know that, you know, you can do, you can do anything you want. You just can't do everything. And so we might have to do a little prioritizing out in the out-years there, but I think we're, that we're in a really good place to manage that. And, and that's a, that's a great place to be. So let's talk about employer pension rates. They're increasing. You can see these lines that, it's troubling to me that they're going up so much, even with the equity, equity markets doing so well. And that's a, an issue here, because what's happening here, you see the blue line. Those are the, that's the dollars for pensions. And, and, and they're going up. We got a little bit of reprieve this year, but then it's going to really ramp up in the, in the out-years here. And the issue for us, the issue for us is that pensions are consuming larger and larger pieces of the pie, of the budget pie, because they're growing faster than other, other parts of the budget. So when you look at the, when you look at the percent of budget, there's the red line. That's the percent of budget. And it's dramatic. In 2013, '14, pensions were 5.5% of our budget. In '22, '23, they're going to be 11.82%. So that's a challenge for us, and so we hope that the state will support pensions and help us with that. Let's talk about responsible ending fund balance. Now, take a look at this line. That is a beautiful line. You know, I tell you, a person shouldn't really gush over their presentations, but I really love this slide. This is like one of the best slides ever, and I just love looking at it. Because look at that, that the ending fund balance is going up. And again, remember, part of this is because of cash flow reasons, and the other part is because of this restricted portion of that ending fund balance. But what you need to know, and this is what, something that maybe a lot of people just don't know, is that we have a cash dry period. It's for half the year. Half the year, we have like no money. And there's, in the general fund, there, for an organization this size, there is very little money in the general fund for the whole first of the year. And so when you see that, you, when you apply the, here's the deficit, right? That red line. And so we run about a $20 to $25 million deficit during the first half of the year. And of course, that deficit, you see that that's improving here because of that, again, that one-time money that's come in, but that's going to go right back down. And so we have to have a ending fund balance that's commensurate with our cash flow needs. Because there's only two options of dealing, well, there's three options, but there's only really two options of dealing with cash flow. And one is to fund it, you're funded ourselves with our funds, which includes a general fund component of reserves and other funds that we can grab. The other component is to go out and borrow the money, and that's issuing a trans. And think credit card, but it's a really expensive credit card, because it comes with attorneys and bond counsel and financial advisors and investment bankers. Oh my goodness. So if we could avoid that, that's probably the best thing to do. And then the third option is borrowing from the state, but we don't want to do that because everybody loses their job. So let's go to now, the state is looking at a surplus. And the LAO has some, offered some suggestions on what they can do with the surplus. And two of those suggestions are here. One is to pay down the pensions. These are wonderful suggestions. And the other one's to fund special education reforms. Now, there's a couple of things that they didn't mention, that if you happen to be talking with them, those kinds of things, you might want to mention these. One is the nutrition services mandate, where we are providing meals to students without any qualifications. So that mandate's not going to go away, but the budget for it is. And so we're hopeful that the state is going to continue funding that mandate. That's really important to us. The other thing is universal transition kindergarten. So far, the state is not funding that for community-funded districts, and we hope that the state will take that up. And because that's going to be wonderful for our younger students. And with that, then, to summarize, state budget's looking favorable. We are in a really good position, even though our expenditures are increasing dramatically. And then we're just in a great place. And so we recommend a positive certification on this interim report. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions? Trustee Orsoilu? Okay, I've got trustee Orsoilu and trustee Wiegand. I will go with trustee Orsoilu. All right, just put your hand up. Trustee Yelsey?
First of all, Mr. Trader, thank you very much for the commentary with your presentation. It really was, made me think of our annual luncheon that we cannot, district luncheon we cannot have this year, but that, appreciate some of your humor in doing this, and definitely appreciate that we are always up and to the right. And that's much, very much, it's very much appreciated that you are looking at all these numbers. And I know you have many more categories than you've ever had in the past to monitor, and I know that is a job that you do very devotedly every single day. So I appreciate that. Could you just clarify for the public? Because there's often misconceptions with our budget that as, last year, for instance, we lost students because, mostly because of COVID. Many of them have come back. But people think that our money is tied to our students. So could you just explain to the public the truth about how our money is given to us?
So Newport Mesa is a very unique district in that, and it's unique throughout the state. There's maybe 100 or so districts in the state that are funded in this manner. And so our funds come from the district's property taxes. So the value of the property is where the district receives their money. And for probably, I would say, 85% of our revenue comes from property taxes. And so it's really key to us to watch that. And that comes with a little bit more risk, because if we have a property recession or a natural disaster of some sort, the state is not going to backfill that money. So it's a wonderful thing, and yet, the other thing is we keep reserves to backstop against something like that happening. So when we do lose students, yes, that funding, our funding is really not related to the student participation so much as it is related to our property values.
Thank you.
Trustee Anderson?
Trustee Orsoilu didn't have her hand up.
No, she doesn't. I just asked her.
The lights don't yet match the seats, so it's hard.
That's what I was asking.
I texted.
I thought you were saying to push. Thank you. One of the things that I was noticing as I was looking through here are some of the large adjustments for COVID-related money. How do you see that impacting us, you know, in the next five years?
So, you know, the COVID money has gone to the board's priorities. And so that COVID money has been skewed towards staffing. Staffing including like behavior specialists, hybrid teachers, school community facilitators, health assistants, social workers, information technology technicians. And also to provide access for student access. So in terms of accelerating Chromebook distributions, we heard tonight, like paper, the online tutoring, all those kinds of things. We've really tried to skew it in that direction. As a result, we've made a huge claim with FEMA, over $2 million. So we haven't put, how do you say, we haven't spent money on personal protection equipment. There is some of that, but it's, we've only spent it on the things that we knew FEMA would not pay for. And so with that, some of that staff is going to stay after COVID. And so there is a, there's a little bit of a fiscal cliff, but it's very manageable. It's really manageable. And if you choose to continue down that road, I'm certain that we could, that we can do that. However, with caveat, we don't know where the economy is going to be at that time. And I was just in the Chapman University economic forecast, and so they were telling us that property values appreciation is going to be slower growth in the next four quarters. They're expecting a recession in the end, around 2023. So, but who knows? And who knows what the board's priorities will be at that time? But we are in a really good position to be able to move your priorities forward, and even though we have a little bit of a fiscal cliff there in '24, '25.
Thank you. And another question about the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which I've been monitoring to see if it makes sense for us to possibly be the time for us to change the Irvine Endowment, the TIC Fund. And it looks like the current CPI is the highest that has been since 1982. And so it looks a bit that the CPI is destroying the TIC's purchasing power. And so what would you recommend that we, what would be, what is our next step? So we, I think in the past, we had talked about we need to do a board policy. What kind of board policy would you like to see to best reflect that, that we could best use that money?
So that's a really good point. Inflation is destroying the value of the TIC, and we're finding out inflation is not, Jerome Powell, the Fed chairman, is not saying transitory inflation anymore. He's saying inflation is structural and sticky. And so it is an issue for the TIC Fund. Currently, the board policy protects purchasing power for the TIC Fund, and as a result, we have not been able to utilize the TIC Fund. And so we would have to have the board change the policy to remove the purchasing power requirement if the board so chose to want to utilize that TIC Fund.
Thank you. And then I have a few more questions, but I don't know if anyone else had questions.
I have a question. You always bring up our pensions consuming larger portion of our income. What are some of your suggestions, if any, we can do to help that out? Either is it state help, or is it things we can do with our budget? Because as we're thinking of, you know, it growing and growing and growing, we're going to have to take down some other services, right? You show this slide to us every year, so I'm just wondering what your suggestions are of, if anything, we can do.
Your influence is tremendous. And so as, it's really up to the state to assist us with this. And they do this through a number, they can do this through a number of ways. So one, they can provide financial support to make that happen. Or two, they can look at the requirements that they're putting on in terms of how they value the pension deficit, so to speak. And they can actually apply different time periods to catch up. So if you think about, what's happening here is they dug a hole, right? We dug a huge hole, and now they're trying to fill it. Well, how fast do we need to fill it? Right? And when you look at pensions, and don't misunderstand, I'm not saying, I don't want to be irresponsible or anything like that, but pensions have rarely ever been funded at 100%, ever, ever, if you look at the history. And so there's room to talk to policymakers about, well, how fast do we fill the hole? And two, we need financial help from the state.
Thank you.
And trustee Crane, I'm going to call in one moment, but our superintendent has a comment?
I just wanted to follow up. What he said is exactly on point. We have opportunities, a lot of us in the room. One of CSBA's priorities, and they'll have their legislative action today, ought to be using non-98 one-time money to pay down the Stirs and Pears obligation, because that's one-time money for ongoing benefit. And I would say PTA has their Safari and other activities that ought to be on their agenda. And we have our labor allies in the room with us right now. Wouldn't you love for the state to take non-98 money, pay down the obligation, so we have more resources locally? Collectively, we have an obligation as we have these budget negotiations to lift that up, because not every group thinks like that, even though they should.
Trustee Crane? Plus, last time I heard, we had a $31 billion state surplus. Perhaps some of that could be used. So the timing could be good if they hear it from different constituents. So, great, great job simplifying a very complex topic, and kudos to you and your department for crunching numbers and keeping us going upward and right. I do have a question, just in the interest of the public. You had said how we get these one-time monies, but they have to last us three years, over three years. What, do you have some of it invested? Is it, can you clarify where that money goes and sits? And does it make any money for us? Because we're limited to where that goes.
So we're required to put our money with the Orange County Treasurer's Office, and the Orange County Treasurer's Office invests that money in very short-term instruments, which makes sense if you're, if you have money that, you know, because we spend this year's money on this year's students. That makes perfect sense. We'll never lose a dime with the Orange County Treasurer's Office. And at the same time, we'll never make a dime either. But it's a real problem for the TIC Fund, because the TIC Fund is forever, never, in perpetuity. And so that's a horrible mismatch of investment horizons.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson, did you want to add your additional?
Thank you. I was noticing in the Prop 39 section, it looks like we have $32 million, and that largely comes from state reimbursements. And I'm wondering what some of those projects are that we currently have that we, do we have any projects lined up for those, or is that money more available?
So that's, yeah, that is bond, or I say, it's building fund money, reimbursements from our general obligation bonds from the state. And we have to use that primarily for facilities. And at this time, we do not have projects scored for those, for that money.
So we could potentially like pick some of the elementary MPRs or things like that that have, need some, need some help. Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question about the, in the special reserve for capital outlay. It looks like there's $20 million in that, and there are current projects that are ongoing. I know that I don't know what those are. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could get a list, perhaps, that shows like what some of those current ongoing projects are that the $20 million for our special reserve is being used for.
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Trustee Metoyer?
The Prop 39 funds, is that not also part of our charter school? Different Prop 39. They need to come up with an Alpha and Omega, maybe.
They do.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. So seeing none, can I call for the question?
I move that we approve the 2021, 2122, sorry, first period interim report of the district's financial status.
Second. It was moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote?
Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 20B, approved design and budget increase for the Home Arts Courtyard at Newport Harbor High School. Mr. Trader, again.
I'd like to introduce Anna Zarenci. She's our Director of Facilities, and she'll add some color to this.
She'll lower this a little bit. Good evening. Welcome, President Bartow, Superintendent Smith, and board, and all of our guests and staff. So I am going to just give you a quick overview. This is Home Arts, correct? I know I have two items.
Yes, Home Arts.
Could you make sure that it points at your mouth, the microphone, once you get all that done?
Sorry for the delay. Oh my. I don't think this has the same. I apologize. Does anyone know how to open an Adobe file on this? Thank you. I use Bluebeam, I apologize. I used Bluebeam, I apologize. It's not going to show my password, right?
We'll all close our eyes. I don't think so.
I apologize for not having this loaded earlier. I guess I'll let it start trying to sign in. Maybe I can get some additional help. So it's not my fault?
Oh, of course not.
Perfect, perfect.
I know Anna likes to have visual aid, so she was hoping to share that. It's one of her presentation styles. I would say for sake of time, let's just go ahead and describe the projects.
No problem. So this project originated in 2019 as a maintenance project. And the original project was, the scope was to replace the kilns in the Home Art Courtyard, which has an outdoor area with two gas kilns. And so we started that project off, and we looked at it, and we said, really, this project, we need to look at this, the entire courtyard area, not just looking at replacing kilns. So the first thing we looked at is how we could reconfigure the space itself within the wall that is part of the outdoor kiln area. And then we went to DSA, and we looked to see about the outdoor covered area over the kiln area to see if that had been DSA-approved, and whether it was in good repair and we could, we could preserve it. That wasn't the case. So as we started to get into those drawings, we, we looked around a little bit more, and we said, we need to really consider this entire courtyard, even outside of the wall area, for the kiln area. So we expanded, with your approval in 2019, the expanded scope that would address the outdoor flat work in addition to the kiln area, and really enhance that area. So the things that we're looking at is to, to improve drainage in that area, landscape and hardscape. If you walk through there, you can see it's been used a great deal for various reasons. And so the intent is really just to enhance that exterior area, provide brick pavers, landscaping, and walkways, so that really that could be used, even as you've seen in the past, it's been used as a performance space. So they will take every opportunity to do that. So what we're here, what we were here for tonight was to show you some pretty pictures, which I will send to you after the meet, after I can get back on a device that works, which is a rendering of what that looks like. And there, so as we went through the design process, we had a, an estimate done. And so we were looking for an increase to the overall project budget. And it's, it's $100,000. Original project budget was 1,250, 1,250,000. And after we did the estimates and we updated the budget, we're looking for another $100,000 to complete that scope of the project. It's on the agenda. If you want to pull up the PDF from the agenda, it might be easier.
Could you speak louder? Trustee Anderson?
It's on the agenda.
I know.
So, so that, if you want to ask any questions, I'll, I'll bring it up.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this improvement. I know that those students have been asking for that kiln for quite some time and are very excited to get it, and the whole courtyard space.
I think I was almost there.
It's a 20.
It's all the way at the end.
20B.
Fourth to the last item. It's a long one.
Yeah, it is a long one.
Just a couple more. Nope, it's up like the fifth.
Item 20B?
20, keep going, keep going.
I keep going.
Up, up. One more.
One more. One more above this.
Up, up, there. No. That's the courtyard first.
There you go.
Ooh.
So as you can see where the white wall is, currently, that's a CMU wall. This is going to have a plaster finish on it. We're rebuilding the canopy over the kiln area. And then you can see the enhanced hardscape outdoor area with some benches and landscaping and all the pretty pavers.
And what's a, I mean, I've been there, but what's a CMU wall for that?
It's just the gray block that you see. So this is just to really make it, so right now, it feels like you're back of house. You're at the back of a facility. And this is to make it more welcoming and finished. And also, what we are trying to discourage is unapproved murals going up on that wall, right? And so if you had seen what was out there before, there was just some paintings out there. They got real creative. And so we're working with Newport Harbor High School to, if they want to put a mural out there, it's going to come through our office, so that it's something appropriate for the, for the area, and doesn't take away from these enhancements.
Thank you. Our Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. I'm so glad that we're doing this project. I know one of the very first conversations that I had with Dr. Bolton was about this space and the drainage, because I was on campus, and he was like, there's the mud. So I was just wondering too, is, I know you, you mentioned draining, because that seemed to be one of the main issues, is that I don't see that really in this design? How, where will that be?
So two things. So there'll be some site drainage that you, you're not going to see it in the rendering. We're really not going to depict that. But the pavers are pervious. So you can have drainage go through, so it's a sand bed. It naturally will drain through the sand bed down to native soil. So we're, we're going to flow it to some area drains. But just the fact of the material that's out there, it's going to be able to absorb the water. And we know all of our schools in certain areas have drainage issues. We all dealt with that today. So every opportunity that we get to do a project and look at drainage in an area, we try to, to do that and bring a comprehensive scope of work back to you. Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yes, I wanted to ask our student board member, who happens to be up on a daze, what you think of the courtyard rendering and all that?
Well, especially with the draining today. It was pretty flooded, so I, I didn't know this was happening until right now, but I think a lot of the students will be real excited. It's, it's, I wouldn't say trash, but it's definitely, it's definitely older. And it has a lot of elements that students have partaken in that she has mentioned. So I think the update would be really nice. It's, it's a, it has potential to be a really great area, as we're being shown. It just, it hasn't been able to recently. So this would be really exciting, and I'm very excited to tell everybody else tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Kate.
What's the timeline on this?
So if we have this board-approved now, we'll be able to move forward with a bidding schedule. And our intent is to start construction over the summer.
Got it.
So it's likely, and I've, I've said this to the school site, that it wouldn't necessarily be completed over the summer, but it would start over the summer. We could get our construction fencing set up and safe off the area, provide access. And it would likely go into the school year, but we would have safe pathways to all the classrooms, classroom doors for access and for egress.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve the design and budget increase for the Home Arts Courtyard at Newport Harbor High School.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Osoilu. I'm sorry. By Trustee Crane. Hearing things out of both sides of my head.
It's okay.
Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Osoilu?
And can we get, for the next one, can we get Trustee Osoilu up there as well, so we can see her?
Sorry.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. I think the next item's mine, so.
Okay, so we've got item 20C. Approved Concept and Design Budget for Gender-Neutral Restrooms at Newport Harbor High School.
So this project is associated with a project that we just talked about. With every project that we do, DSA looks at the restrooms that are closest to the improvement area. And so with the project that we just described to you, DSA has required some modifications to the restrooms in order to comply with ADA. And so as we were taking a look at the scope of work that's going to be required, we really wanted to consider some of the requests that we've been having from Newport Harbor High School. We've had, we have a monthly meeting with all of our secondary schools, and then any sites that we have active projects, such as Enson. And at those meetings, some concerns and some requests had been presented to the facilities team to provide single-stall restrooms for gender-neutral purposes or inclusion. So due to the fact that we had to do restroom modifications, we thought this was an opportunity to look at the restrooms and see how we might be able to provide single-stall restrooms in order to respond to the needs of the school site with that specific issue in mind. So what we've done, so I personally took an interest in this and reached out to one of our advocacy groups, which is CASH. And I got in contact with CDE, who has created a stakeholder group in order to start putting together recommendations for districts. Currently, there are no recommendations for implementation of gender-neutral restrooms. So I submitted an application. I'm on the stakeholder group now, and I'm working with the top of CDE. And I'm also working with the State Architect, Architective Division of Stake Architects, I declare, on the code requirements. And so really, what we are asking you for is an operative, so first of all, I'll make you aware that we're working on this. And secondly, to have the board approve us continuing down this path in concept, and also provide a planning budget. So we're not talking about going through full construction documents, bidding, construction. This is just a matter of, let us explore, let us work with CDE and DSA to prepare a plan for you to review to, to respond to this request.
I'll go first. To clarify, this is something that we have to do as part of ADA when we do construction. So it's something we would want to look at. And we're really in the beginning stages of figuring out how we comply and meet the needs of the site.
Yes, so definitely the ADA component is required. And really, this is just a matter of taking that ADA component from where it is in the general restroom with all of the other specific gender stalls, and creating a separate ADA stall that can be accessed from a common area versus having to go through a girls' designated or a boys' designated restroom. So it would serve both, it's a single stall, would serve both the purposes of an ADA requirement and a gender-neutral, you know, I wouldn't say requirement, but it will, it will end up there. And once we get the guidelines in place with CDE, it will be a condition of approval, plan approval for funding. So currently, we have to get CD approval on all our plans. We have to comply with their guidelines. This will, once they get the guidelines out, this will end up being part of that approval process.
Thank you. Trustee Osoilu?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Anna, for looking into this and exploring it. I really appreciate the focus on inclusivity, always. You mentioned that you were meeting with other high schools. Has anyone else requested this type of accommodation? Or is it only at Newport Harbor that it's been discussed? Has any of the other secondary sites mentioned it in passing or requested, or anything like that?
At our monthly meetings, we ask the high school principals if they have any needs. And so we haven't had any other specific needs for renovation of a project, and we really haven't had the opportunity to do that. We have the opportunity to do this because there's a larger project happening, and restroom improvements are required for ADA for the purposes of completing this project. So as we do projects, we will analyze those restrooms and determine how we could, we could scope those, that restroom work to comply with what we're trying to propose here. What we are doing on, in the interim, is just looking at where single-stall restrooms already exist and how we can sign them and have hardware on them that is appropriate, because not every restroom at Newport Harbor is going to get this renovation. So there are some single-stall restrooms that we can already re-sign and consider them gender-neutral without doing a complete renovation. So we don't have any renovation requests from any other sites right now. And that's really because we saw the opportunity, and we're presenting the opportunity as we do this project.
Trustee Metoye?
And this project is, that what we would be approving tonight is a budget for us to come up with that design and see what will work in this area, and how we can best address the concerns and needs that we have. And you may say, oh, we can do it by doing this and this. And you may say, ooh, we can't do it unless we do this and this. And that's what this is going to be for.
So it's for that, and also, just so that you know, staff is spending time, you know, allocating, we have a small team on our, in facilities, allocating time to work with CDE and to work with DSA. But yes, it's to bring a, an option back to you, to primarily architectural fees.
Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
I know this is all still a concept, but just because I, I've heard some comments from, from, some public comments and concerns about the gender-neutral bathroom. Is it, are they single stalls with locks? What, what, is there any kind of protection for someone who may walk in? And then it's?
So there are a couple of studies out there. There aren't too many schools who have implemented new construction or major renovation. There are a few reports that I've reviewed and I've worked with our architect on. And so the idea is, is that you have a very visible, open hand-washing station with a series of sinks. And then you would have entrances to boys and girls. And then you would have two single-stall, full-height, full-wall doors. I mean, just imagine your, your restroom at home with a toilet and a sink. It's closed door, full-height walls, right? That's, that's kind of the concept that we're going with. So, you know, it's not, you're not going to have to go through the other restrooms. And the idea of having people, having visibility into that sink area is really going to help people feel comfortable to use whichever one that they want.
Thank you. Trustee Yelsey?
So I just have a question for moving forward. This is an ADA requirement right now for any new construction?
So the ADA requirement, so the existing restrooms, the way that you enter them, the hallway that leads you to the stalls is too narrow. So in order to make, meet ADA requirement for that hallway, we have to push the wall out. Well, the wall being pushed out pushes into the ADA stall. So what, so we're looking at, how do we resolve this? And we have to meet a code fixture count. So analyzing the code, verifying the number of fixtures we have, making sure that, so, so when you start moving walls and squishing things around, you look at opportunities of, how can we do this better? Is this hallway, which was really wasted space, and it feels very narrow going in there, and very, I guess, just separate, right? Not a lot of visibility getting in there. So the ADA requirement exists, and this is us just taking the opportunity to create separate spaces outside of the designated boys' and girls' restroom that could satisfy ADA and provide the gender-neutral feature.
Okay, because I was under the impression when this was brought to us that eventually this will be a requirement, maybe for every school?
So it, it likely will. And as I was explaining to you, part of my involvement with the stakeholder group with CDE is to come up with those recommendations. And those recommendations will eventually get implemented. And when you go, say, you wanted to go to the state, to the Office of School Construction for funding, the things you have to do before you can submit an application to the state for funding is you have to have CDE approval, and you have to have DSA approval. So CDE is going to be enforcing those guidelines. And so if they say, you're doing a project, and you're doing restrooms, these are our guidelines for getting our approval of having single-stall, gender-neutral ADA restrooms. Have you met that, or haven't you? So by nature of wanting to receive state funds, which you were just talking about with Jeff, So by nature of wanting to receive state funds, which you were just talking about with Jeff, um, that have been reimbursement funds, because we always make sure our plans can have CDE approval so we can be reimbursed for funding, we're naturally going to do this. If you didn't go for funding at all, there is a way that you may not, but you still can't get away with it, not doing ADA.
Right. I under- I understand that.
DSA, yeah.
Okay.
It is a little complicated and the building code is a little complicated. And that's why we're working with DSA and architects and CDE.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Thank you for explaining this in so much detail. Um, when I was in Sweden and Norway, every bathroom is like this. They call them family rooms at some places. It's just, it's open for anyone. It's not necessarily like that we're assigning or taking away someone's gender. It's more that it's an open bathroom and it's self-contained and you have a lot more privacy than some of the bathrooms at Newport Harbor that are like extremely tiny and it's like an airplane.
My daughter lives in Germany and she said the same thing.
Yeah. It's really common in a lot of other places. Um, and so I thank you for explaining it. I would like to call, um, to approve this motion for the design. It sounds like you're going to explain the design to us and then we can decide at that point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that this is approving the budget to explore that and not the design itself.
So it is in concept, you agree with us spending time on this and you don't oppose the gender neutral restrooms. And you are allocating funds for us to start design so that we could present that back to you for approval. And we'll do that before we submit to DSA and we'll get site feedback as well, which we've asked Newport Harbor to create a committee to have some feedback.
Thank you. Uh, Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Um, I just have a quick question. Um, I know at school, a lot of the bathrooms are like separated, like in the history hall especially, they're on different floor levels. Would this be like, if this were to go through, would this be implemented in like other bathrooms? Or would this just be like one separate area in?
So as we do projects, we will look to see if there is, um, if we can develop a standard and implement that. With most of these sites already being existing sites and we're not doing new construction, there will be challenges. Um, but we've been able to make improvements for ADA. So with that same concept of what we're doing, rather than putting the ADA stall with the, uh, specific gender, we can look at opportunities to have separate doors to remove that, that stall from the, the gender specific area. So we'll definitely keep looking at it.
Were there any additional questions?
I wanted to second, trustee Anderson's. Did I miss you, trustee Orsoilu? I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I just had wanted to second it after trustee Anderson's.
All right. It's been moved by trustee Anderson and seconded by trustee Orsoilu.
Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
Thank you all and thanks for being patient with me.
Okay. So we're going to move to 20D, approve the 2022 CSBA Delegate Assembly nominations.
Yes. Thank you. Um, California School Boards Association has a delegate assembly, which is representative of each of the regions. Region 15 is Orange County. We are the largest delegate, um, which is wonderful because we have a pretty strong voice. Every year, um, the board has openings and asks for nominees. I'm currently serving a two-year term. My term is up in 2023. We have the opportunity to nominate another person to be on our delegate assembly from Newport Mesa. And, um, trustee President Barto put in her application. And so we have the opportunity to nominate her tonight. And we as a board have to agree on the nominee to put forward. Then it goes, and then we will be getting all the nominees of, of region 15 back in the spring. And we'll probably like March and we'll be voting on it then to decide. So it would be a very advan- it'd be very advantageous for us to have trustee Barto on the delegate assembly. She's also currently the Unified School District Rep for region 15. So she's going to be a very strong voice on the, on the delegate assembly. So if I can move to nominate her, I will do so.
Second.
It's a little, little funny to do this myself. All right. It's been moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Yelsey. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Yes. Oh, was there a discussion?
I just had a, yeah.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
What are the differences between the, the United School of, I didn't realize that you were doing that.
Oh, the Orange County School Boards Association.
Oh, that, I thought it was something else.
She's on the executive board of that. Right.
Right. I thought you were saying something.
No.
Uh, Student Board Member Kate Cherry?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
All right. Uh, we have no items that were moved from consent. So we move on to the resolution adoption calendar. Um, item 21A, adopt resolution 111221 to approve continued funding application with the California Department of Education for the state preschool program for 2022, 2023 school year. John Drake?
Yes, this will be short and sweet. Uh, we're asking you to adopt, uh, this resolution approving our application to the California State Preschool Program, uh, for the maximum reimbursable amount for our program next year, which is, uh, over $3,300,000.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Yelsey, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
Seven O, moving on to 21B. Adopt resolution of 121221, authorizing additional district representative signatory for the state eligibility determination school facility program, Form SAB 50-3. Mr. Trader?
This resolution is to add Dr. Smith as a signatory for the state eligibility determination school facility program.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Yelsey. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
Okay. We move on to 21C. Adopt resolution 13-12-21, authorization of signatures for the Newport Mesa Unified School District Workers Compensation Account for Farmers and Merchants Bank. Mr. Trader?
This is to add Dr. Smith to the, uh, signatory for these items.
I move to, uh, adopt resolution 131221, authorization of signatures for Newport Mesa Unified School District, uh, workers compensation account for Farmers and Merchants Bank.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
We move on to 21D. Adopt resolution 14-12-21, authorization of signatures for the Newport Mesa Unified School District Self-Inured Property and Liability Trust Account for Farmers and Merchants Bank.
Again, this is add Dr. Smith to the, um, self-insured property liability trust account.
I move to adopt, uh, 21D, adoption of resolution 14-12-21, authorization of signatures for Newport Mesa Unified School District Self-Inured Property and Liability Trust Account for Farmers and Merchants Bank.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by trustee Wagen and seconded by trustee Matoye. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Yes.
So 22 informal reports we no longer do, so we need to adjust our agenda accordingly or?
I think it just says the superintendent. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still doing them. Yeah, just, just a handful of things to, uh, to mention. Uh, Student Board Member Cherry, you weren't there, but if you were, you would have made us proud. Uh, you've done a great job tonight. It was awesome seeing our student board members at CSBA. Uh, the smiles on their faces, how much they enjoyed learning. I bumped into them in the street on their way to lunch and they were so excited, uh, to be there. Uh, and you know, it's a long week. It's a lot of learning. Uh, and I was starting to drag a little bit, I'll be honest. And I saw them, I was set the rest of the week. So to you and your colleagues, uh, thank you so much for being the inspiration that you are. What, want to report out and say this publicly, we've had parents asking about it. The board has said that when the new superintendent came on and got her or his feet set, that, that they would, uh, do some study sessions. So I want to announce on January 25th, we have the study session to look at middle school electives. Uh, we'll have a time forthcoming, but excited about that. Speaking about, uh, exciting news and expansions, if you will, uh, the volunteerism expansion, as you've reported before, um, happens after the first of the year. Want to put some dates in front of folks. January 10th, Raptor opens for, um, those folks who are unvaccinated who are willing to get tested and receive a negative test, they'll be able to enroll. At the same time, we'll do training at the sites so that folks know our, our certificated and classified folks, what's going on and how to do it and, and they're ready to rock and roll as soon as that is implemented. And then the date is January 18th. Um, as long as everything goes as, as planned, uh, that day, we'll be able to expand volunteerism. Speaking of expansion of opportunities, we have a great opportunity this week to have a conversation about how we might expand learning opportunities in this district. The California Department of Education, their expanded learning, uh, the, their whole department is flying down here to meet with us and to brainstorm how we might, uh, be a model district in this regard. I've already met with our, our labor allies and mentioned that they will be a huge part of our brainstorming, uh, creation and implementation of whatever it is that we determine will expand the necessary opportunities for all of our students uh, so that we can meet their varied needs. So that's really, really exciting as well. Concordia University gave us the excellent educational partnerships. I'll pass that down so you can see it. Um, certainly for, uh, our placement of their student teachers, but also as trustee Anderson pointed out, we do a lot of things with them. And I think they just like all of you, uh, in this district. So that's an award that we received. Um, on that note, we just got a notice today from Hoag. Uh, we've been writing grants for about 20 years. Mary Graska has done that. Uh, we were just notified that we will be getting $220,000 from them to do health and wellness programs in the district. So that, that got Mr. Trader's attention right away. Uh, we're grateful for our partners. Lastly, this was mentioned earlier, I'll just say it so that we can start to, um, notify the public. Uh, we've been told that tomorrow, the governor has the, um, uh, through the CDPH, new mandates relative indoors, regardless of your vaccination status, uh, and the mandate to wear masks. Uh, that's from the 15th tomorrow to January 15th. Um, and we have a meeting, right, that week of January 15th. And so, uh, we'll make sure we make people aware. Uh, if, if folks don't want to wear masks, then, um, they can view online, uh, through YouTube, however we broadcast. Uh, if folks won't wear them inside, then we'll have to close the meeting and conduct business. But that will be at least through the 15th, the expectation statewide indoors, regardless of vaccination status. So we just want to get that message out there. And that concludes my report.
Do you have any board member reports?
I do.
Trustee Matoye?
Um, I just wanted, I, I, I know all of us on the board have been attending the marvelous holiday programs and theater events that have been going on. At every one that I've attended, the comment was, we're so glad to be back. Thank you for doing whatever we could to do. Personally, I wish that we could use CIF rules for them, which means that if the actors, actresses, singers were tested, that they could be maskless on the stage. But we'll do what we need to do to stay in place and do what we have to. But it was just a joy to be able to see our kids. And I'm looking forward, maybe after the first of the year, that we could expand it back to the elementaries. Because after the 15th, of course, well, no, they could still get together and be planning to have programs and things, because I don't understand the differences. But that will either be explained to me or we could move on. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on, I just closed up, was a congratulations to any and all of our college, our secondary high schools who sent, um, students to the Los Angeles Chargers STEM on the sideline competition. And congratulations to Costa Mesa High School, who were back-to-back champions in that area. So go Mustangs and like we say, student athletes, science athletes. It's all, what a great gift for our, just holiday gift for before the holidays. Academic scholars. Thank you.
Trustee Yelsey?
Oh yeah. I just wanted to, um, while she's still here, thank, uh, Lisa Bowler, who invited me to Harbor Council this last week, I, I guess it was, um, to talk about a commentary that I had written for the paper. And I went there and talked to the PTA presidents, who are wonderful. And they have a lot of good suggestions and input on everything we're doing. And I explained the reason why I did that on behalf of the board to, um, really make them aware that there are a lot of misconceptions, rumors that go around in our district. And just wanted to make them aware of what the truth is and what we're doing in our district to keep our schools, as we say all the time, open all day, every year, ev- all year, every day. And they were very appreciative of that and asked me if we could send it out to our parent community, because not everybody reads papers. And so we did that through the district. And I think all of us were quite surprised at the response we got back. Um, it wasn't intended to get any kind of response, but we got probably more correspondence than we usually get on something like that of thanks to the board for what you're doing to keep our kids in school. There are a lot of people who don't speak up about those kinds of things, who really appreciate their kids being in school every day. Their, their, their student children want to be in school and they're fine with the way we are approaching it. Of anything that's required of us by mandate, we've been doing, but we are not making our own mandates, um, or creating our own. So I want to thank you, Lisa, for doing that. And, um, just really appreciative of all our schools and all our PTAs for what they do to help us get the word out to the community. And in that regard, I just want to also, uh, wish everybody a happy holiday season, uh, coming up. I hope it's joyful, family time, um, and everybody comes back healthy.
And PFOs. I mean, we do have a couple of PFOs. Yay for the PF, PTAs.
But I understand, but there's.
Um, trustee Crane, do you mind if I just jump?
Of course.
Okay, jumping. Uh, I wanted to add my board report just in that, um, I'm really grateful to all of our teachers and staff and everyone who's worked so hard through all of this. I know it's been rough and I hope that you do enjoy a well-deserved holiday break. Um, this week, among other things, I attended the webinar by the Unity Project and heard from many concerned parents, um, around the state and, uh, their messages of what they wanted to say and communicate. Um, and just wanted to say that, um, along with keeping kids in schools and schools open every day, following those guidelines that we have, those mandates are what makes it possible for our children to be in the classroom. And I think that's, that's our number one priority is to make sure that children can be in the classroom and get an education. Um, personally, I, I also want to say thank you to trustee Yelsey for putting out that letter and, uh, for supporting our direction of not, um, coming up with our own mandates regarded to vaccines in children. Um, and just also wanted to say that personally, I find it hopeful, um, to hear that, um, belief and personal exemptions will be part of what we're looking forward to, um, over the school year. I hope we hear more of that. Um, and that's it for my board report. If others wanted to do the board reports, I'll do my, uh, committee report at the end. Trustee Orsoilu?
I just, um, wanted to take a moment to, um, thank, um, Superintendent Smith for, um, having a date set for the middle school discussion on electives of the January 25th. Um, that has been a long time coming. I remember it was early January of, um, 2021, right after I was elected, when I sat for coffee with President Yelsey at that time. Um, and was begging for a reformation in, in the middle school curriculum. And I'm so excited that parents will have a chance to attend, um, a study session and really think deeply about how to increase equity across our middle schools so that every family wants to attend their local middle school, um, that's in. wants to attend their local middle school that's in their community. So that's really exciting to me. And again, a thank you to President, former President Yelsey for that letter that went out to families because it was very heartwarming to see so many emails from the silent majority that were really speaking up and understanding the need for masks and vaccines and things like that, that are public health, basic mitigation strategies that work. And it was really heartwarming to hear the outpouring of support because we really hear from one side that feels safe enough to attend the boardroom unmasked, but there's a whole lot of others that don't, so they don't attend ever. And hearing their emails was very heartwarming. So thank you for sending that letter out.
Trustee Crane?
I was going to defer to trustee Anderson and then I'll go after her.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Smith for reinstating the three bus stops for Whittier and for Ray that serve over 200 kids. I think that's going to have a huge impact. I've heard from several parents and so I just wanted to say thank you again for making that happen and taking the time to speak with the parents personally. I spoke with a few people at Victoria who have kids that are going into T-Winkle and some of them have requested if the study session can be in the evening because a lot of the parents that are really interested in this topic work. So they had requested that I communicate if we could please have the study session at 6:00 or 7:00 PM so we can have a high parent attendance and they can hear what the plans are. And then I also just wanted to request, when people make public comments and they distribute paperwork, I would like to see them when they come through. I remember when I gave public comment and I spent a lot of time putting together documents and I think some of those are things we might be deciding on, so in real time, I would like to receive those. Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
First, I saw that our student board member just left. I wanted to wish all secondary schools good luck on finals. It's finals week.
She asked if she could leave because she had an exam tomorrow.
So anyway, someone sent a message. And we, of course, we attended the CSBA conference and for new board members, it's really refreshing to be there in person and really understand and take in how many school boards are in this state. It's like a thousand-plus school boards. And so it was a very informative conference and also a great team-building conference. So that was wonderful. Going back again next year, looking forward to it. I also wanted to thank Superintendent Smith on reinstating the bus for Whittier and Ray families. I think that was really wonderful to see them come and speak to us and have a voice and I'm glad that we listened and I know that it's going to help some attendance and tardiness at those schools, so that's great. And the fact that we heard the community on the west side. And we had our Newport Mesa School Foundation meeting last week. We introduced Dr. Smith to these wonderful, this wonderful group of, most of them were retired teachers or principals. Their heart is really in helping our kids and they are looking forward to having an event on May 4th, I believe, or is it 5th?
May 4th.
And they enlisted our own Mr. Trader to be the MC, so that's wonderful. And if you want to add to?
Sure, yes. The grants for teachers that want to submit are due on January 1st, so it would be really helpful to help spread the word about that. I didn't realize it was that early, so I think if people can spend a couple of minutes or an hour or four over the Christmas break and submit those, I think it might be that you can start applying. I don't know if there's a hard deadline. There had been in the past, now they're going to be online. People can submit their grant requests online. So I wanted to highlight that. And then also too, if people wanted to contribute to the amazing foundation that provides grants for things that the teachers request, some teachers request just books for their classrooms, others request other kind of enhancements. If you join Smile Amazon, before January 10th, they will get the most amount of money. They get 5% back. So if people just want to support teachers who have applied for grants, that is an option as well. Thank you.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes, I just wanted to say I attended the holiday shows, just like Shar, and it's pretty amazing to see what our musical production, you know, groups and choirs and everything can achieve with last year being something, a year that they couldn't perform. So a lot of the choirs and orchestras have been rebuilt. And so it's just a phenomenal to see what they can achieve, including some of the elementary school bands where you kind of think that it's the first time ever playing instruments for the last six weeks and they actually make a song. So that is amazing to see. But it is, it is just nice to see people gathering again and seeing great accomplishments by our students. And another thing I just wanted to say, thank you to the district and to Dr. Smith for expanding the volunteer program. I have heard that a lot from constituents in my area, that they really do want to volunteer and they would like to have an idea of what's going on in the class. And I've heard so many people that have been able to go back and volunteer just really fall in love with their schools again. So I think it's a great, meaningful way to get constituent involvement in our schools and just, you know, bring people back to Newport Mesa. So thank you.
Trustee Metoyer?
I just wanted to add, since we were talking about performances in the arts, we're excited that we hired a music teacher so that would release Tamara Fairbanks to become our new VAPA, for those of you that know Visual and Performing Arts TOSA. And it's so, it really elevates Newport Mesa's participation in arts of all kind, both, it says visual and performing, so it's also ceramics and art things and the art show and they set up everything. And because of that coordination, we have our, we have plays that are judged throughout the state. We have our art shows that are judged by Orange Coast College and other judges. I mean, it really elevates our program. So congratulations to Tamara Fairbanks, who'll be able to start because we have a music teacher. We couldn't let her go until we had somebody to sit in her seat, so congratulations to her. Thank you.
And I wanted to end with committee reports. We have heard a few. We haven't heard Delac. Did you have anything to report?
I do not know.
And then the parent?
Nope, she nodded.
The parent Ed, was that?
Oh, the CIC. We were at conference during that time, so we weren't able to participate. But it's going to be on the webpage, so we can go visit. It was on Ruler and we can go back and look at that now.
And I wanted to add the crop report. So Coastline ROP was both, you know, it was bittersweet. We had a really wonderful Superintendent Carol Hume and she is retiring. We were very pleased to find a wonderful new superintendent of Coastline ROP who will be beginning January 17th, Brian Dozer of Vitalink. So if you worked with him with Vitalink, he's got a, he's very dynamic and really so passionate about career technical education, so really excited to have him. And I know a lot of the staff was very pleased that we selected him as well, so that's going to be very exciting coming up. And then we've got the youth sports council. Trustee Orsoilu?
Hi, yes, it was really great to hear all of the, it was like Lance was on everything they needed. Lance was already two steps ahead, so it was really exciting to hear the collaboration between all the sports teams and getting what they needed out of facilities and moving things forward and continuing to focus on all the different projects that they have. There are so many. But it was just, what stood out was just Lance giving phenomenal immediate updates and fixes to all the things that came up. So it was pretty cool. So props to Lance, if you're watching. It was pretty awesome, so thank you.
Anything else anyone wants to add?
I'm just going to piggyback on the thanking Lance train. Today, it was really wonderful to see how fast the teams jumped into action to take care of the massive down tree at Whittier. It was, it was wonderful to see the trees got trimmed a few months ago, so it wasn't as large as it would have been or it would have taken out the portable probably on the corner. So thank you for being proactive in trimming the trees and also getting your crew out there within 10 minutes. It was amazing and it was all cleared away and everyone could walk, leaving school with proper caution signs around everything, so thank you. That was an excellent job today.
No one else anything else to add? Just wanted to, once again, thank all of our hardworking teachers and staff and please enjoy your break and we get there later this weekend. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:06.